Evening. In place of Commissioner Musall, I will get this kit us going until he graces with his presence and call this uh Newburgh Planning Commission meeting to order for the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. And can we get roll call, please?
Sharon Capri. Jason Dale.
Here.
Laney Quinn.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Michael Griffiths.
Here.
Avery Hansen.
Here.
Thank you very much. Uh this time I'd like to open the public record for any comments from the public that are not about the uh items on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar for last uh month's meeting. Do I have a motion or comments or anything regarding that?
Planning Commissioner Wright, I motion to approve. Planning Commission meeting minutes for March ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
On commission.
Uh just just in before the bell with Commissioner Capri. Commissioner Capri with the second uh can I both uh voice vote all in favor uh of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any any against say nay? Hearing none. The motion passes to approve the uh minutes for the uh March ninth, two twenty-two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Moving on, we have a couple of quadra judicial public hearings. And um Doug, do you have one of the cheat sheet in front of me so I can everything?
That'd be great. I try.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. At this point, we'd like to call for abstentions, bias, expertise contact, and objections jurisdiction. Anybody? Okay. Uh we'll move on to the legal announcement from Commissioner Hanson.
Good. O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable 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 city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the land use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to give for the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This is part of the law. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidence evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Uh moving on to the staff report for this particular issue we have in front of us.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, this uh is an application related to the Springbrook Master Plan, so it's a master plan change, uh subdivision, a zone change, uh some commercial property and a stream corridor. So your staff report was pretty brief. It's a memo that says that the applicant is requested to continue this hearing to May eleventh um of twenty twenty-three at seven P M here at the Public Safety Building, so we will not be taking any testimony this evening, but we will need a motion to continue the hearing to a date, certain time and location, and then a second and then vote.
Very well, thank you.
Planning Planning Commissioner Wright moves to continue the hearing for M I S C three two two dash zero zero two forward slash Z M A two two dash zero zero one forward slash S U V three two two dash zero zero two forward slash M I S C two 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 dash zero 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 five to May eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven P M at the Newburgh Public Safety Building.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh can you please print into the mic there? Commissioner, yeah.
Commissioner Griffiths, second.
Very well, thank you very much. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri.
Please, please use the mics.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Michael Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Very well, motion passes to continue uh the uh issue we have in front of us to the May eleventh meeting here at the Public Safety Building. Okay, moving on. We have C U P twenty-two dash zero zero one seven, correct? Very well, okay. At this time, we also need to again call for abstentions, bias, expertise contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none, we'll move on again to yet another legal announcement from Commissioner Hanson.
O R S.
You're gonna get good at this.
O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be might be raised in an appeal of this case to the land use Board of Appeals, L U B A must be raised in the in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the government or its designated need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Moving on to the staff report. And we have Planning Manager Downing.
Yes.
Thank you.
So uh Vice Chair Dale, Planning Commissioners, thanks so much for letting us go ahead and present this project. So this project, C U P twenty-two twenty-two dash zero zero one seven is for a vacation rental uh requested at four eleven North School Street. And the applicant is not here in person today, but they are watching via Zoom. So if we need them or anything like that, they've informed me that they're there. So.
Very well.
Um on the next slide, we'll go ahead and show. Oh, I have a player. Sorry, I thought I thought it was. Don't get in the hang of it. Okay. So here we saw have some of the background information associated with this project. Applicant owner is Christian Peterson. As I mentioned before, it's a conditional use permit request. And this would be for their requesting approval for the use of a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling for uses of vacation rental home. That location is at four eleven North School Street, tax lot R three two one eight D E D one zero four zero zero. It's located in the R two zoning district, and the applicable criteria for tonight's project are uh fifteen two two five zero six zero related to conditional use permit criteria for type three procedures and fifteen point four four five point three hundred through fifteen point four four five three hundred and fifty for vacation rental homes. So this is a map of the subject property. It's surrounded on all sides by residential uses. Like I mentioned on the prior slide, it's also located in the R two zoning designation or zoning district. This is an aerial shot of the photo, so the the blocked out areas are neighboring properties, so we just went ahead and excluded those from the imagery, but you're looking here at an overview of the house with a small accessory structure towards the back of the property, a small garage, as well as the um area leading up to it. One thing I would note, on the left-hand side of this image, as you look at it, that is an alley that leads to adjoining properties. The drive area is where you see the the truck that leads into it. Uh for criteria A fifteen two two five zero six zero, we identified and it's in the staff report, this is a two-bedroom, single-family home. It's located north of the downtown area, and it's considered a regular ongoing residential use, and it would continue to be so as a short as a vacation rental home. It has three total parking spaces, one in the garage, two surface or in that drive area leading up towards that accessory structure. Um located to the next criteria under fifteen two two five zero six zero B, location, design, site planning of the proposed development. This one, the app in the application materials and the narrative provided by the applicant, they indicate that it's an attractive vacation rental due to its proximity to downtown George Fox University and some of the regional amenities that we have near Newburgh. It's located approximately point two miles from the downtown area, and that the proposed use is similar in size and scope as a long-term rental. Um so something longer than thirty days in nature or being owner occupied. And then criteria fifteen two two five zero six zero C. So the staff report indicates that this would be compatible with residential uses as it's relatively similar in size and scope to being a rented or owner occupied dwelling, and the proposed use would be consistent with the applicable criteria. Including those in fifteen two two five zero six zero and those in fifteen point four four five, uh which is Article seven relating to vacation rental homes. So a few of the criteria under those, the the article related to vacation rental homes we have listed here, net fifteen point four four five, and this slide shows three ten through three forty. So saying that the vacation rental must be a single-family dwelling, which this is, that the uh the applicant would be required to register with the city and pay a transient lodging tax, which they have acknowledged and said that they will do. That the standards related to that are providing off-street parking spaces. Um they've indicated there are three off-street parking spaces which exceeds the required uh requirement of two. That the proposed project would have a maximum maximum occupancy of four, which is two guests per bedroom, which is complies with the standard, and the prom premises will not include R Vs, tents, or other temporary shelters. It will also be required for posting outside of the property. Um and the contact information is also included in the staff report that they'll be posting, and it's related to the owner and rental company information, um police contact information, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, weekly garbage pickup day, and that's all to be posted near the front door. And so with that, staff recommends that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order two zero two three dash zero six with conditions approving the conditional use permit for C U P two two dash zero zero one seven for a vacation rental home at four eleven North School Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot R three two one eight D D one zero four zero zero.
Thank you, Ms. Downing. Uh do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Wright?
Um I noticed that the applicant uh previously did not state a specific management company, but I see that they are down as a rental management company. Will they be taking care of the property as well?
The applicant indicated that they would be going directly to them, and that would be they would be managing the property actively.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to open the record for public testimony. As a reminder, there will be a five limit time limit per speaker, a fifteen minute time limit for applicant and principal opponent. Uh speaker goes to the table, uh states your name and presents your testimony. Uh and we may ask questions. Uh the there can be the applicants, proponents, opponents, and undecideds. Staff reads his written correspondence if there is any, and applicant will have a chance for rebuttal. So this time with the applicant is this here by Zoom, is that correct?
The applicant is uh indicated a little earlier this evening that they're tuned in via Zoom right now. Looks like they are, if they have anything.
And if at this point the applicant can uh take the floor if they have anything they wish to add. And our tech wizards will uh make sure that uh.
They can chime in anytime they want.
Okay. And it's in uh Mr. Peterson?
Yes, yes, hello.
Oh, okay, did you? Did you want to speak or are you uh satisfied with what staff has already put forward?
Uh I'm satisfied with how that was presented. That was great. So unless somebody else has something to say, I'm satisfied.
Okay, very well. Um uh just just before we move on to the next person, uh do we have any questions for Mr. Peterson here from the commission? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Uh do we have any proponents in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, do we have any proponents on Zoom who would like to speak? Not. Okay. Do we have any opponents? Who who's the primary opponent to this project, if any? Do we have nobody on Zoom? Okay. Well, that uh certainly shortens things, so. Um since we haven't had any uh opponents, I don't think the applicant needs to rebut anything, so at this point I'm going to clo- close public testimony and hear final comments from staff and recommendation.
Unless there are questions from the commission, the staff recommendation stands to move to adopt Planning Commission Order two zero two three dash zero six with conditions approving conditional use permit for C U P two two dash zero zero one seven.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Any final questions for staff at this point? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, deliberation, motions, what do we think? Do we want to talk about it or we want to make a motion?
It looks like the application is pretty complete. There's no public uh testimony. Seems to be fairly straightforward.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
I'd just like to point out that we we are looking towards looking to further. I know, are we talking about this evening about further?
You'll get an update, but it's very short.
It's okay. Um this one does seem very straightforward, as Commissioner Wright pointed out, but I'm looking forward to um exploring further opportunities to further cap these in the future, but this one does seem very straightforward, and it's in a very wonderful spot.
Well, and as as a reminder to everyone, uh we uh the rules are the rules as they are now, so any future rules are future rules for future applications, so as you're well aware, I'm sure. So any other comments or motions or anything?
Planning Commissioner Wright to approve order for twenty twenty-three or Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-three dash zero six order approving conditional use permit C U P dash zero zero one seven for a vacation rental home at four one one North School Street, Yamhill County, City of Newburgh.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Capri. I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Michael Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Very well, motion passes and the C U P twenty-two dash zero zero one seven is approved. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thank you to staff. Moving on.
Much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a legislative public hearing about an amendment to the Newburgh Development Code. Doug, I believe you're on.
Uh Mr. Chair, I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Downing, but we do need to do.
Oh, we do have the.
Not the expertise department, any bias or jurisdiction.
Right, okay. So at this point, I'd like to call for abstentions, bias, expertise contact, or and objections to jurisdiction in regards to this legislative public hearing to this now before us. Hearing none, moving on to Mr. Downing.
Thank you very much. So what we're looking at today. Babe, can you put the share the presentation in a moment? Thank you. Um we're moving moving along so quickly. This is a little quicker than I was expecting, but thank you again for bringing this out, so.
Got get in, get it, let's. So it's our role.
Uh there's nothing wrong with that, so we can we can move right along. Um although I'm try was trying to catch the attention of Counselor Olson, because she's okay to come back in. But um, all right, so what we have tonight is a Development Code Amendment, so the Newburgh Development Code Amendment regarding early issuance of building permits upon substantial completion of public improvements. I'm gonna break that down because it's kind of a mouthful of a title. But basically, there are two proposed amendments that are occurring here. One, that we update the Newburgh Municipal Code uh devi- definition related to substantial completion for consistency with Oregon State law, and I'll go into that a little further as we get deeper into the presentation. Additionally, we're gonna update the Newburgh Municipal Code, specifically Development Code Section, text to create consistency with amendments to state law resulting from Oregon's H B twenty-three zero six that was passed in the twenty nineteen session. So if I say H B twenty-three oh six, I'm referring to that state law. So on this slide, we've got a basic outline, and again, this is all in the staff report, so I'm really just pulling pulling highlights from the staff report related to these Development Code Amendments, so. What I would say for this, the important part of what we're seeing is H B twenty-three oh six was adopted and codified. It became O R S four fi- four five five point one seven five, and it requires counties and cities to issue residential building permits upon substantial completion of public improvements and residential subdivisions. So there's a couple of pieces that are important there. I would say one of those is what is substantial completion? And the other one is related to that what it's applied to, and that would be residential subdivisions. But it's not every project that could occur. It would be for residential subdivisions. On the right side of the slide, we have that definition that comes from O R S five five four five five point one seven for defining substantial completion. And so what we mean when we say that is that these are public improvements, specifically those related to water supply system, fire hydrant system, sewage disposal system, stormwater drainage system, accepting any landscaping requirements that are part of of the system, curbs, demarcating uh of street signs acceptable for emergency responders and roads necessary for access by emergency vehicles. And so basically, we need to make sure that there's substantial amount of infrastructure for public health and safety. So that's what we're looking at, and this would be determined by the city engineer. So that's who makes that determination. Those are in the amendments too, and in the staff report. So going to this slide, a few of the highlights of the process and how we got here. So the Newburgh City Council adopted a resolution number two zero two one dash thirty-seven five five initiating this Development Code Amendment. Um the development Community Development Director deemed the application complete that occurred in February of this year. Planning staff posted the notice in four public places and placed that on the Newburgh's website. That was on March twenty-third. March thirtieth, the Newburgh Graphic published this notice about this hearing, this topic, and then tonight we have the meeting, it's April thirteenth. Also, in part of our process, we went out to do agency comments, and so on the left-hand part, left-hand portion of the slide, we have um just some highlights from there. If you were to look in the staff report, you'd see that it was reviewed by fourteen different agencies and departments. Each one of those reported no conflict. One of the things I wanted to highlight is one of those was our own building department, so they also reviewed it and said no conflict. Um in addition to that, and so that's part of attachment too in the staff report, in addition to that, this was submitted to the Department of Land Land Conservation and Development as part of their post acknowledgement plan amendment. So if you're doing something that's related to your acknowledged land use plans, you submit that to D L C D, and that was that occurred here, and we have received no comments from them. So they have a thirty jurisdictions are required to give a thirty-five day minimum window before adoption. We did that, and we actually submitted a little earlier. We've received no comments from them. Public comments in the staff report, you'll notice there are no public comments noted. Um following close of business day on April tenth, we received one public comment that was given to each of you as a hard copy as a supplemental memo. And um if you have any questions about that, just let us know. So this gets into more of the the meat and potatoes of of what the amendment is all about. So right now, we have a single traditional pathway for issuance of building permits. And I have a a slide that's gonna talk about that a little more holistically on the next slide. What this would do is create a second pathway, so that first pathway would remain, this one here listed as path to traditional issuance of building permits. This one creates an an alternative opportunity if a developer wanted to take that pathway. And so it would allow the issuance of building permits prior to the recorded plat based on substantial completion of a project's public improvements for individuals who were to choose that path. The owner would be required to provide a security bond for a hundred twenty percent of the outstanding public improvements. So when we say public improvement, it's all those things that we saw listed in that definition, and then any other public improvements that would be required as part of that development. So when we think about the traditional issuance of building permits, this is the basic pathway, and there is a lot more behind this that happens. But this is some of its most basic pieces. So first, you go through the land use process. When you talk about the development pipeline, land use tends to be at the start. So you look at it, you get the approval of a tentative plat or some kind of approval that says you can move forward. Once you, once the applicant does that, they move into the public improvement process. That's where you start putting down the streets, the roads, the infrastructure, stormwater, all those things. And then once that has occurred, then you move into recording the final plat. So you were given a tentative plat, then you record it, and then after that, you can have your building permits issued, and you can begin construction. And then once you finish construction, the many inspections happen to make sure that it was done the way that it was supposed to be done. And that's specifically uh our building official asked me to highlight that, that it doesn't just, you don't just build and get a certificate of occupancy. You build, you get inspected, and then you get a certificate of occupancy. Um and that certificate of occupancy is really the finish line for many of those projects. So what we would have here is, in addition to that traditional pathway, you would be able to start doing issuance of building permits at a different place in the pipeline. There's some risk associated with that, which is why there's a bond, when they do that hundred and twenty percent bond that was required for any outstanding. So once you're deemed substantially complete with those public improvements, there's still gonna be an increment left, and so the applicant would be required to pay a hundred and twenty percent bond on the value of those outstanding improvements in case something goes wrong. And then they can go ahead and move forward. They can start um with issuance of those building permits and being in construction that much earlier to hopefully get done sooner. So that's really what they were looking at um and was the intent behind the legislation. So with that, I'm gonna highlight some of the changes that that occurred. Um this slide highlights where those changes occur in the code, and then I'm gonna kind of highlight some of the legislative text that's also an exhibit. It's in, I think it's exhibit B. Is it exhibit A? Thank you very much. Um but that's in the staff report. So with that, so in general provisions, that's a modification to the definitions portion of that chapter of the Development Code. In chapter fifteen point two three five, we would be adding a new section related directly to the early issuance of residential building permits, and that would be section fifteen point two three five point zero six zero. There would be a revision to the section relating to filing and recording associated with land divisions. And so that's that final plat recordation. Then in chapter fifteen point two four zero related to planned unit development regulations, there would be a revision to that too, because in some cases, planned unit developments could qualify for this as well, so there's a threshold at which they qualify that's noted in there. And then in chapter fifteen point five zero five relating to public improvement standards, it talks about where this is applicable, and so that's the revision that occurs there. So we'll go through those. This slide has a lot of text on it, because I couldn't find a way, and I didn't want to split it into two. But it's in the staff report. That's the important part. And we included those in there in legislative format, so you could see exactly what was happening. But in in short, what we see here is there was a reference to substantially complete items. But because it's a defined term, we took that out of the definitions, and we put in a definition that is consistent with state law. So that's what this is intended to reflect. Then this is the new section that was inserted into the land divisions chapter of the Development Code. And so this goes through that early issuance of building permits, and it establishes those points one, two, three, and four in this section that they would be required to comply with when they go through this pathway. And this item is uh also in the land division section, but you can see it's an internal reference that refers to the newly added section. So it's relatively concise. And then also relating to the planned unit development regulations, this is another one that really acts as a slightly lengthier internal reference. It is referencing early issuance of permits, and it's talking about those projects to which it would be applicable if it's a planned unit development, specifically units where sixty- specifically, units where sixty percent or more of the planned unit development is residential in nature. And then last, you see there's an addition here under, uh, basically, this was the city, city approval of public improvement require, uh, plug, public improvements required. So item one was already in there and says are in place and approved by the director. And then, item two here is the new part, and so that says or are substantially complete pursuant to, and it refers to that new section on early issuance of building permits, so that new pathway. And so that is, those are the revisions and changes. In your staff report, you'll find an exhibit B, there was an analysis, basically findings conducted, associated with statewide goals which are listed here. I would say those that are probably of highest interest to this planning commission are those where we had something to say about it. And so those would be those relating to land use planning, those related to economic development, housing, public facilities and services, most of the other ones were not substantially applicable. And so there wasn't really much in the findings, because it didn't really apply. But in each of these other ones, the finding was made, there was a discussion of how this was applicable, a lot of it was for consistency with state law. And more or less supported the goals associated with goals two, nine, ten, and eleven. Then looking at the city's comprehensive plan, you'll notice many of these categories are very similar to the state, the state goals. And so are the ones that would be important for this, this particular development code amendment. That relate to land use planning, the economy, housing, public facilities and services. Those findings were also very, very similar to those that were made for our um, comprehensive land use goals. And so with that, that's the end of this presentation. And so with that, staff is recommending that the can, commission move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution two zero two-three dash three-eight-five, recommending that the city council amend the Newburgh Municipal Code, Development Code fifteen point zero five point zero three zero, fifteen point two-three-five, fifteen point two-three-five point zero eight zero, fifteen point two-four-zero, point zero four zero, and fifteen point five zero five. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Downing, any questions for Mr. Downing?
I'm Commissioner Wright. Um, enrolled House Bill two-three-zero-six, um, and Act, Section one C. Um, substantial completion means the city, county, or other appropriate public body is inspected, tested, and found acceptable under applicable code requirements, but this is the part I'm curious about. Unless the parties agree to a lower standard. My question is, will the city of Newburgh accept this practice, will the sixty percent completion and criteria on page four of forty-three this document? Um, is it always gonna be a sixty percent threshold, and is that ever gonna be accepted as being lesser?
In this case, the, the staff wouldn't be authorized to accept anything lesser, because there's no caveat or discussion in the language.
Commissioner, is the sixty percent was related to planned unit developments? So you can have a planned unit development that is entirely residential. And so we talked about a threshold, because we've had situations where we've had planned unit developments that are mixed and have some commercial in them. And so, we established that if sixty percent of that PUD is residential, then it can utilize this provision from this House Bill. If, if they came in and it was fifty percent residential, then they would not be able to use that provision.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Doug.
Any further questions for Mr. Downing? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this point, we'd like to open the public testimony and uh, for anyone who wishes to comment or big suggestions, does anybody wish to step forward to the mic? Uh, anybody on Zoom? Okay. Well, that's fast, uh, then we will close public testimony and move on to a final recommendation from Mr. Downing.
So the staff recommendation remains the same unless there's further discussion from your commit, your commission. Staff recommends that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution two zero two-three dash three-eight-five as rec, as recommended.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, deliberation. What do we think?
I'm sorry, I actually had a question for uh.
Okay.
Doug Rux.
Go ahead.
On the legislative public hearing, B-one or six dot A, the verbiage in here is fifteen point two-three-five point zero-six-zero not added to this section because it's not being amended, but adding, being added to, therefore not listed.
That could simply be an oversight, or it was initially written in as a reference to the chapter entirely. If you would prefer that it be amended to reference the newly created section zero, actually, I can tell you what it is. The section doesn't exist yet. So it wouldn't be amending the section that doesn't exist, so it's referencing the chapter that's being amended.
Yes, I see it's uh, does have a reference to create an internal reference to in the ad hoc. So I presume that is uh, su- sufficient.
Very well, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or deliberation? They want to talk about for this? Okay. I, I don't really have any comments about it, so do we have a motion to go forward? Mr. Capri.
Mr. Capri, I make a motion that we adopt or amend uh, the resolution number two zero two-three dash three-eight-five to the Newburgh Municipal Cl- Code. Is that right?
Doug, do we need to read all the numbers there?
Do I have to read all the numbers?
Thank you very much, do we have a second to that?
You can simply refer to adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two-three dash three-eight-five. And then, that's just happened, so do we have a second for that?
Mr. Quinn, I second that.
Very well, the motion in a second. Can I get a real call vote, please?
Sharon Capri. Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Michael Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Very well, motion passes unanimously. And on to new business. Doug?
Mr. Vice Chair, good to see you.
You as well, as always.
Um, so this evening, we have before you um, the twenty-twenty-three Newburgh Housing Production Strategy. So in your staff report, there was a bill that was passed, which was House Bill two thousand and three. Um, so the city received a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development uh, to work on this project, a seventy thousand dollar grant, we engaged Echo Northwest as our consultant, uh, they were our consultant of record when we did our housing needs analysis and our economic analysis as well. So we've been working on this for, what, Beth? Over a year?
A little more than a year, yeah.
Yeah, so far, um, so we provided briefings to Planning Commission as we were going through the process, we provided briefings to the city council. There were some changes that came out of the last briefing with the city council, and so we will go over that tonight, so Beth is gonna give you a PowerPoint presentation and kind of hit some of the highlights. Uh, there were two actions that were originally proposed by the Citizens Advisory Committee uh, off of their list that the council chose to remove, and the council inserted three new action items instead. And so I think I will stop there, and I will turn it over to Beth.
Okay, um, you guys have been going at quite a clip here, so I'll, I'll try to both maintain um, momentum, um, but stop and answer questions as we go along. Um, so if you have them, please, uh, please tell me. So as Doug mentioned, we've been working on this project for more than a year, beginning in twenty-twenty-two. Um, we've worked with the Citizens Committee and had five meetings with that group. Um, we've also uh, done an open house in January, where we got some attendance and some feedback from uh, people who participated in the open house. Uh, we also did, uh, I believe we've got a, a slide on this in a moment, so I'll, I'll stop talking about stakeholder involvement. The Housing Production Strategy is connected to the um, HCA because the uh, the Housing Needs Analysis, the Housing Needs Analysis, rather, the new name is HCA. The Housing Needs Analysis, it gives you the factual basis to understand the city's um, housing needs and unmet housing needs there. The Housing Production Strategy really digs into those unmet housing needs um, and evaluates gaps and existing policies and proposes um, additional new strategies to address those gaps. So these two documents are, are really connected to each other and build um, on each other. The Housing Production Strategy is an eight-year action plan. Um, it is uh, in itself, generally speaking, it includes policies that support development, but it, it in itself is not necessarily going to be the big idea that results in uh, new development, it's, it's intended to give the city tools to support development that uh, uh, comes in the door both for um, income restricted housing and for a market rate affordable housing. So the city is going to be implementing the actions that we'll talk about in a few minutes over the next eight years. What's changed since you last saw this is we added strategies to evaluate uh, lowering SDCs without imperiling the city's infrastructure, allowing division of lots for middle housing types. We need to add, because we, we didn't in the version that you have, um, an action about um, expanding the UGB and looking at rezoning land um, to uh, provide more opportunities for housing development. We removed a strategy about reducing building permit fees for affordable housing and implementing the multiple unit property tax exemption, so those are, are no longer in the strategy. So the actions in the HPS, I can walk through these very briefly. Um, you've got an action about supporting uh, the Newburgh Workforce Housing Consortium, which is a group of uh, businesses in Newport, uh, Newburgh, I apologize, I'm also working in Newport, they're both new. Um, Newburgh that is looking at building between fifteen and thirty rental units. Um, together, they received about three million, well, the city received about three million dollars from the legislature um, in a past legislative session to support that development. We've got a land bank strategy and partnerships for developing affordable housing, supporting preservation of manufactured home parks, there's a few different ways of doing that. Um, one, the city could adopt a zone that allows manufactured home parks as a permitted use and prohibits other types of housing. Um, the city can also work with the owners of uh, manufactured home parks as they're looking at selling them, um, where there's an opportunity for the residents to buy the manufactured home parks. Um, that's something that a couple of uh, nonprofits across the state have been working with owners still, so the city can provide uh, some convening um, uh, to help that happen, if that's a possibility. Looking at um, density bonuses to support development of affordable housing, reducing system development charges, um, evaluating ways to lower system development charges without imperiling city infrastructure, supporting application of fair housing laws um, through partnerships um, and education, providing informational resources to low-income households or people experiencing houselessness, looking at restrictions um, uh, uh, and conducting potentially inspections on short-term rentals, and allowing a division of uh, lots for middle housing types. The action that we haven't added yet is about rezoning and potentially UGB expansion, and then using urban renewal to support infrastructure development. Before I go on, do you have any questions about any of those, that's, that's most of my presentation, actually?
Anyone? Bueller? Oh, uh, excuse, excuse me, Ms. Olson? Please.
Sorry, just a quick question, how did the dates get set? And are they binding?
Ah, that is a very good question, so we worked with city staff um, on setting the dates. Um, give me one moment, and I will pull up that, that chart that shows this a little bit better in the HPS document itself. Pardon me, my lights turn out, if I don't flack my wings every every so often, it's a little bit funny, um. So the implementation schedule is here. Um, they are at least somewhat binding. So the idea with the implementation schedule that we've got here is uh, is that not everything can happen at once. The city can do things earlier than is on the schedule, but if you do something later than is on the schedule, um, then you have to report to DLCD why you're doing it later, why you missed the deadline. Um, and uh, whether the city is going to be able to do it. Um, or whether the city is gonna need to look at changing its housing production strategy to remove, say, an action that's not viable and potentially substitute in another action. Does that answer your question?
Um, yes, thank you, maybe um, Doug, or play being able to explain why you put the dates where you put them, things like that many don't understand how some of the processes work.
Sure.
Okay.
So, item A, um, Workforce Housing Consortium activities are underway now. Uh, we actually have to commit the money by the end of June of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the land bank, uh, that came out of conversations in our last uh, discussion with city council, to kind of move that outward in time. And so we kind of put it in the middle. The C, uh, Preservation and Manufactured Homes, that one is in part tied to the availability of getting CDPG grant funds, we're on a two-year cycle, so it takes about two years to do a project, then we have to wait two years before we apply again to be able to do that. Um, D is uh, the density bonuses, that was another one that came out of the last conversation with the city council to move that into an outward year or horizon. So I put it in twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, reduce SDCs for affordable housing, uh, we did twenty-twenty-five because there is a subcommittee of councils currently talking about system development charges, and so we'll have to see where that goes, didn't want to put it in twenty-twenty-three, because I don't know what the outcome's gonna be, so I moved it out to twenty-twenty-five. Um, G, let's see, F, uh, GG, support application for fair housing, ongoing issue. Federal requirements. H, um, informational resources again, um, ongoing activity. I is
SDCs of short-term rentals.
And so this one was arbitrary, I, apart, you know, we had council a little over a year ago, asked us to do some further research, Planning Commission has asked us to do research, so we're doing that research at this point in time, and then, once we have all that, we're gonna have to wait and see what Planning Commission's recommendations may be, what city council wants to do. So again, I put that one kind of out in kind of the mid-horizon of the eight years. Uh, the land, uh, land division, uh, twenty-twenty-three, because we're doing that now. Uh, we've already had one a first reading of an ordinance for that, and from the city council, we're going back on May first for the second reading. And then K, uh, expanding the urban growth boundary, this one came out of uh, discussions with the city council, city council actually adopted their goals on April third. And in there, they talk about uh, within five years to expand the urban growth boundary, so that's kind of why I put that one where it's at. And then urban renewal, its implementation is directly related to when tax increment dollars would be arriving, so our first allotment comes in November of this year, but it's a smaller amount, this is the first year, it usually takes about five years to generate enough funds that you can go out and do a bond uh, against future proceeds of tax increment revenue, so that's why that one kind of is moved out to the twenty-twenty-seven time.
Okay. Quick follow-up question?
Please.
So in order to adopt this in a timely fashion, do, are these dates required as part of the HPS, you have to put a timeline in?
Yes, it's very specifically required when you will adopt, and when you, you will begin to implement, those are required.
Then, um, the, the one that stood out to me is the land bank one, because it was The, the one that stood out to me is the land bank one because it was, people were interested, but there isn't a lot of land available, so it was. Later might be better. But. It could also be removed, right? If it doesn't make sense.
Um, so a couple of things. Um. What is in the timeline horizon is recommended or suggested by staff. Planning commission could change it. City council can change it. City council with the grant that we have is we have to submit our final paperwork to the state by the end of May. Um, in the original grant, it said that we had to adopt. The housing production strategy and conversations I've had with DLCD staff is we only have to accept it. Part of that is the conversation we had at our last discussion with city council. Is. In my words, accepting it because the council wants to be able to review this document on an annual basis. And make changes. There is a midpoint four-year report that needs to be done. Uh, and I've also shared that if you change your HPS, there's a process in administrative rule. Of making particular changes. So. We've been working with Beth and Echo Northwest since our last discussion with city council to. Put information into this document, and that's why there's still some tweaks we have to make before we get it to council, because our timeframe was pretty short. Um. And, uh, so there is actually language that's in the implementation section that, that talks about annual reviews. And then, uh, a resolution that I would prepare to city council will also make sure that we make it very clear of the resolution that. It would be on an annual basis or as determined by city council.
And I will also mention that, um, even if you have a land bank strategy, you may not have much land in it an awful lot of the time. And so perhaps you don't have much land in it when the strategy is adopted and part of the, um, implementation of it. Um, is, is essentially, um, finding land to purchase. Um, that could be in your urban renewal area using. Is. Well, it could be through expansion of the urban growth boundary. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, or, uh, Councilor Olson. Uh, moving on. It's Beth?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I'm not moving away from you.
No, I, I, uh, didn't have a name in front of my screen and, and I'm, I'm terrible with names, so. Go ahead.
Um. That is. Well, that is the, uh, the next, the last, uh, piece. Um, if there's any questions, um, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll hand it back over to Doug.
Do we have any questions for Miss Beth? Seeing none. We'll move on to Doug.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair. Um, so you've seen the presentation, uh, you have the draft of the HPS, as I have indicated. There's still a few tweaks that we need to do. Uh, there were some specific words in the actions, you know, a one-word addition. That we've got embedded in there. Beth has already given me the track changes version for that, so I'm going through that. Um, we need to add the one on the urban growth boundary expansion, we did not have time to get that. In, in your version, but that's why I put in your staff report that. In language to the effect that we were going to be adding into the proposed, uh, HPS. So at this point, uh, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash three eight nine.
Okay. Um, do, is this, is this a legislative hearing or is this, is this something we want to open to the public for commentary or?
You can open it up to the public for comments, but it is not a legislative or a quasi-judicial hearing.
So as we have members in the audience here tonight, does anybody wish to speak about it, anything to do with this particular subject? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking. Do we have, do we have anybody on Zoom that might be, uh, interested in this? Faye? Okay.
I think I had a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Quinn, so Doug, when you say that the urban growth boundary was going to be taken into consideration or having certain words, um, embedded later on, is that because? We need to discuss those at this time, or is that going to be open for review in the future?
Um. Commissioner, that came directly from the last briefing with the city council, and they had that on their list. And so we have to, and Beth, when she went through the slide, she identified the piece that we still have to put in there. By Monday. Uh, to be able to get to May first, and, and so we're responding directly from, direction from the city council.
Okay.
And it is that action about rezoning land for housing, um, and/or expanding the urban growth boundary.
That, is that, uh, clarify things, kind of like mud? Well, okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Any questions for staff?
Just real quick.
Uh, Councilor Olson.
Sorry to be noisy tonight.
No, no, feel free.
I think what I heard Commissioner Quinn asking was, is the language in the table? That we just saw, is that the language you're adding, or is there something new they need to review? Was that?
It was the language that was directly from the last city council discussion.
Okay, thank you.
We did not modify it, we didn't tweak it, just copied and pasted.
Okay. Okay. Uh, food, if we, uh, think we're fairly clear on this, do we have any recommendations for a resolution? Or motion for a resolution, I should say.
Plank Commissioner Wright, I motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight nine. Recommending city council accept the twenty twenty-three Newburgh Production Strategy.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Capri. And we can just do a voice vote on this one, I think. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And again, say nay. Hearing none, motion, resolution, motion to pass the resolution passes.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Beth. Moving on, items for staff.
Uh, updates.
Updates on past actions, so the city council conducted its first reading of amendments to the water master plan. Uh, they had some modifications that they identified, and so we are working with engineering division on those changes. Uh, they've held the first reading of the ordinance for the multifamily code audit, that's the design standard, site and building design standards. Um, that will be coming back Monday, uh, for its second reading. Uh, they, we had the housing production strategy briefing with city council. And city council approved the loan documents out of Fund fourteen, our economic development fund for the Fairfield Inn Hotel. It's not a project that you saw, uh, because it was a type-two director's decision. Of a lot of activities to address SDCs, uh, to get a new seventy-nine-room Marriott. Um, Fairfield Inn Hotel in town, so they're working to pull their public improvement.
Where is this week?
Where is that going to be? It's going south of Columbia Bank, so it's on Brucher. Over by Fred Meyer, next to, uh, Newburgh Ford.
Boy, they're gonna be right in the traffic pattern.
Yeah. Um. So that was the council items, you had your schedule of upcoming activity, so you're gonna have a, a big meeting on May eleventh, there's gonna be a lot of things on there. I apologize, but, uh. Just the way it happened to work out. The, uh, other thing I wanted to bring up, uh, was. Conversations by the planning commission since September of this year, and so you asked us on September eighth to work on vacation rentals, so. Clay is working on that. Uh, there were discussions on October thirteenth and November tenth about Second Street is the urban center. And Commissioner Capri was brought that item forward, uh, wasn't anything specifically for the planning commission to do. Commissioner was going to talk with Portland State. Uh, on. Eleven-ten, we had the discussion about the timing of material based upon packet size. My colleague here to the left, uh, and so we did respond to that one, is that we have all of these code-required statutory requirements and. And we weren't able to make those adjustments. Uh, twelve-eight, there was the request to name a creek after, uh, councillor Bacon. Uh, that pivoted, and they've actually named this room the Denise Bacon Community Room, and so it's on the wall. So please stop, take a read. Uh, one-twelve, you asked us to update the planning commission guidelines, and so we did that. We adopted it by resolution. And on February ninth, there was a request about the Oregon State University, uh, plant species guidelines, and so. Fay was doing some work on that one, and, uh, so we have it with all of the other things we've got going on, it has not floated to the top.
Okay. Uh, so, I can interrupt if you're in, oh, you're, you're, okay, uh, Commissioner Capri, do you have anything new to report from checking with Portland, Portland State?
I haven't yet. I actually thought that what I needed to do was come down and talk to Doug and get a full. Guideline that I could bring down to them for the students, because they would have to have our city. You know, map and the guidelines of what things are going to be acceptable and not. To go forward with that, so, um, Doug, if maybe I could come in and meet with you in a week or so. And we'll go forward with that in May.
Always available, just have to find a slot.
Both parties are, if both parties are progressing with, uh, with this, then that's good, so. Okay. Very well, uh, that's all for staff, so. Moving on to. Oh.
So vacation rentals.
Right, so the, the status of vacation rentals is that with all the other competing priorities we have going on. I did not make a whole lot of progress, but one of the pieces of progress we were able to make was something that was shared with. All the commissioners prior to this was, um, a pair of maps that were created by our GIS staff. So I had mentioned previously that we were looking into a couple of different data sources to evaluate. The vacation rentals or short-term rentals, and what that came up with was the sixty-five data points. And so this includes those that are permitted, and so that have CUPs, those that are in the pipeline to receive a CUP, and I think the latest one. On that list goes up to CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 five, so there are a couple more since then. But I'm gonna stop here, because when we're trying to do the, we want the latest and greatest data, but at some time you have to cut it off, otherwise you kind of end up on the treadmill. And you can't get off. So that's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be a snapshot from April is what we'll move forward with as we write this and hopefully get it turned around as soon as possible. Uh, but I did want to point out that on the maps, the table at the bottom also includes, so it includes those sixty-five locations, some of which have CUPs, some of which. Will be processed as we move forward, and then others don't, and that's okay, and this was something that was discussed. Um, in the preceding months when we met, is that those that were grandfathered in, those that got in before the regulations were adopted. Are allowed to continue operating, but it does make it hard for us to verify that they truly were existing before that, as opposed to somehow. Just getting in and starting to pay TLT taxes. To the best of our knowledge, that's the case with all of these. But because we have limited enforcement mechanisms and TLT is managed somewhere else, sorry, transient lodging tax is managed. Not in the planning division, but elsewhere, that does create kind of a disconnect opportunity. So there's gonna be some discussion of that in the white paper when it comes up. But this is what we were able to do for this, this time, I'm very hopeful that I'll be able to do the research, get it off my plate by next month. With you all, so we can progress it, but I will say that, um, we continue to be shorthanded, busy. And to have some things that are on deadlines and that are scheduled to come for you next month. So I just can't make any promises, but I really, truly want this to get wrapped up, because it is hard to just kind of. Keep kicking things forward, and really the components that are left are the very last couple of public comments, basically those that were received in the latter half of last year. To this year, which are limited, so that, that really doesn't take very long, but then doing some of the policy comparison, which means going to jurisdiction is jurisdiction. Characterizing what they're doing and sharing that. So that's the part, and then actually writing the paper to pull all these pieces together. We're gonna try not make it too excessively long, but make it concise and useful, that's the goal. So, that's the update that I have for all of you.
Any questions for Mister Downing on, uh? And that will lovely, well, well said update.
Thank you.
Just gratitude, thank you guys, I know you have, we are very short-stopped in the planning commission department right now, so I really, really appreciate the effort you're putting into it and the timeframe that you're working on.
Yes, and we have, uh, Ashley Smith, who's been in front of you a number of times, she's leading us. And so her last day is, is May first.
Extra big thank you then.
Okay. Uh, there's no more, nothing further from staff, okay, and moving on to items from commissioners. Do we have anything to apprise ourselves of?
Of course.
Commissioner Wright.
Plank Commissioner Wright, um. I don't know if some of you chimed in on, uh, the. City council hearing, but, um. Recently. April twenty-third, um, I do believe the city has passed, um. This to be. Help me with this, Doug. Um, April twenty-third, our mayor has requested that we wear blue on Friday. In order to support Child Abuse Prevention Day and Month. Um, for April for the city of Newburgh, and to please look into Juliet'shouse.org. Um, that supports the children's area. Um, above and beyond that.
Excuse me, Commissioner Wright, is that every Friday in particular?
Um, just the citizens, just everybody, and I.
I think it was the specific twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Uh, April twenty-third, I think was a specific.
It was in the proclamation that the mayor read at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, in, anything?
And then my last one is a question for Doug, rather than go through. Like when you guys told me about the typos and they needed to brief, brought up at this meeting. Do I need to rattle all that off, or can we just say? When there are typos, can we say I have notified the city of typos?
Yes.
Okay. Sweet.
Very good.
And that was it?
Anyone else having any items they want to share? Okay. Then. As Vice Chair of the Newburgh City Planning Commission, I call this meeting to an adjournment. And we will see you next month. Thank you all very much for coming.